Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, November 17th, 2025, regular meeting for Village Council for the Village of Yellow Springs. Judy, if you could call the row.
Yes, Stokes.
I am here.
Devor Leonard.
Here.
We have by Zoom, Hausch.
Here.
Gustafson.
Did we?
Gustafson.
Did we check in?
Here.
Okay.
Thank you. And we are also expecting Carmen Brown at about 6:10, also President and Village Manager, Johnny Burns, Project Leader, Elise Gerard-Dullo. From the Shared Resource Center, we have Tiffany Heiser and our solicitor, Amy Blankenship.
All right. So we don't, as it turns out, have swearings in this evening. Those will be pushed off until the 15th of December. And I already checked with Brian. We're going to do announcements, and Brian, I understand you have a couple?
I do, yeah. First of all, I just wanted to thank our citizens for supporting the operating levy. That is super important to keep our budget balanced, and I really appreciate that we have that trust. And then, otherwise, I mean, it's Carmen's birthday tomorrow.
Oh.
Yeah, so when she gets here at 6:10, I didn't know that we said happy birthday.
We will, we will.
All right.
Well, I'm a man of a certain age. I might forget by then, but we'll do the, I'll take, I'll write a note about that. All right. All right. Any other announcements? Okay, hearing done, we're going to move on. We'll start off with the consent agenda. I have three items there, first of which is the minutes of our November 3rd regular meeting. We'll entertain a move and a motion in a second for approving those minutes.
Well, so moved.
And I will, okay, I'm going to maybe jump in and avoid the delay. All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, hearing done, that motion has passed. Next, we have our minutes from our November 10th special council meeting. We're dealing with evaluations. Again, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Yep, thank you much. All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Not a problem. All right. We had majority of three, so that motion is passed. And lastly, on the consent agenda, is the credit card statement for the month of October. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor of approving the credit card statement for October, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that's all of us. All right, that motion has passed. Now, we're doing a review of the agenda. This is where we take the opportunity to add to, consider adding to, removing from the agenda. I have already spoken to one item that's been removed. Is there anything else, any other changes to the agenda? All right, hearing done, we will proceed with the agenda as published. And we are now to petitions and communications, if you would. Gavin, please.
Okay, the clerk will receive and file Rebecca Cooter relating to Christmas, Sue Pfeiffer related to potential green space property, and MVR PC flyer about safe streets for all open house.
Okay, thank you for that, Gavin. Appreciate you. Now, we're moving on to public hearings and legislation. Before we move into that, since we do have a few emergency readings, I will also entertain a motion in a second to allow us to read those emergency ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of doing so, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. There's no one to be opposed. All right, thank you. So on that note, all right, Judy, if you would, please, by title only, read ordinance, read in ordinance 2025-25.
This is approving the 2026 annual appropriations and declaring an emergency to the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
Great. Can I get a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. Tiffany?
You have in your packets the first reading of your appropriations. We've gone over this several meetings. We've spent the last couple of months going through budgets and council commissions and sponsorships and whatnot, and so the final product of that is appropriations, and you have them in your packet. Are there any questions about the details contained therein?
Council, any questions for Tiffany regarding the 2026 annual appropriations? All right, hearing done, any other commentary before the vote? Okay.
So this is? We're doing just like a check-in vote? This is the first, and then we're going to do the final vote next time, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's a check-in.
All right.
First reading.
Yep, and I just, because it was declaring an emergency, I wanted to go in and just do that.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Call the row, please.
Devor Leonard.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Gustafson?
No.
Hausch?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have checked in. All right, Judy, if you could, read by title only. Emergency reading of ordinance 2025-26.
This is, this is establishing and describing the boundaries of the Village of Yellow Springs community reinvestment area and authorizing and approving related matters and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I want to hand this off to Amy.
Yes, thank you. Hello, good evening. We also have Tyler Bridge with us via Zoom. Tyler is the attorney, the Bricker, Grayden Public Finance Attorney that has been working on this for the village. So this is the long-promised ordinance establishing a community reinvestment area in the village. This is the statutory tool that lets the village issue tax abatements. This is a different version than what was seen the last time council had it in their, in the packet. We did a work session on this document. This one has now been distilled down to only allow for abatements on multifamily facilities, as well as commercial and industrial developments. Every abatement that would be authorized under this ordinance would come to council first for approval of an agreement, so there would be no abatements issued by staff under this ordinance. Everything would only occur after council had seen the specifics of any particular request and agreement authorizing an abatement. Answer any questions that you might have if you want to talk specifics, then of course I'll rely on Tyler, who, like I say, is with us by Zoom. But I think that this should encapsulate the plan of what council had indicated was the general will on this at the last couple of conversations that we've had.
Yes, Amy, if you could, you did just say that this primarily focuses on commercial and industrial applications, if you will, but there's a couple of bullets at the bottom of the memo from Bricker and Grayden that talks about how residential concerns can be addressed.
So this is being, in this ordinance, multifamily developments are considered residential developments.
Okay.
You have authority under the law to jump in, Tyler, if I'm misstating anything, but you have authority under the statute to designate multifamily as residential or as commercial, and in this ordinance, council is designating them as residential.
Okay. Tyler, how'd she do?
A plus.
All righty, good, just like she always does.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, council, any questions or comments?
I mean, I don't know if questions, more of a comment. I sort of took this as like, kind of like a lowest common denominator, that there was pretty broad buy-in on, hey, let's at least sort of set up the framework, and then, as I understand it, every deal that would use this still has to be approved, so it's not like, you know, if you do the 15%, you know, affordable units or something, that you're guaranteed you're going to get something. So I think this is just sort of creating the foundation, and then I've, and we talked about this, I think, at a recent meeting, I assume that in the next council, we'll have to pick up deciding whether we want to pursue some of the stuff that came in the last version that was, you know, some of the scoring around
Sure.
different types of developments, and then the possibility of any kind of like targeting or prioritizing beyond, like essentially, this is, just has the affordability component, but then if we wanted to say, oh, we're interested in, you know, here's the kinds of things that we might be more interested in seeing development on, we could get into that, but this is just sort of the starting point.
Right. The ordinance that was in the packet for the work session on this was a kitchen sink approach, and it had everything that's at your fingertips to use for an abatement. So yes, absolutely, this is, nothing's etched in stone. Council can revisit this ordinance and revise it accordingly. And to answer, to address your first point, any abatement issued under this ordinance will be approved by council by resolution approving an agreement.
All right.
Just to underscore, at this point, we have not agreed to any abatements of any sort, so.
No, council, the village has a request from the Windsor Development Company. They've requested an abatement, so there will be, I'm sure, further follow-up with council on that point, but this tonight, Brian, to your point, is just the overarching program. This is nothing specific to any one development.
Thank you for that, Amy. Gavin, was there something else? Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, with this being an emergency reading, we are going to open up a public hearing so that anyone in the public, residents or otherwise, wants to speak to this issue, now's your time to do so. The public hearing is now open. Well, first off, you all failed because you didn't wish Carmen a happy birthday.
Brian did say happy birthday tomorrow.
I'm just curious about why this is an emergency.
Okay, we need your name.
Timothy Barton, 610 Livermore. Sorry.
Sure, this is being, thanks for that, I meant to address that in my statement. This is being presented to council as an emergency to allow it to take effect before the end of the year, which will allow, if it's ready, an agreement with Windsor to come to this council next month in one of the meetings in December for your consideration.
Here's what a lot of residents are concerned, it's not just me, everybody's talking about, the concern is that when something's passed as an emergency, we don't have, we can't do a referendum. We can't say, oh, you know what, let's let the people vote. And there seems to be a consensus that all the new council members have had a real problem with Windsor getting a massive $4 million tax break when they're this well-financed company. So I have no problem with it, but as a resident, it's just that it would be nice that if it were, you know, that we would have some sort of say, and it feels, it's a little bit against the will of the people, like we voted for all these people who said they didn't want to give Windsor an abatement, and now there's just like, well, this emergency, push this through, and then the people don't get a right, you know, it sounds very undemocratic. I know it's not the legacy you guys want. You don't want to have a legacy, well, we went against the people and we just jammed it through. So I will say this, and I think it's important. Right now, Yellow Springs Real Estate is getting hammered. If you look at Zillow, there's almost 20 houses for sale in Yellow Springs, most of which have been reduced at least once, if not twice. I mean, there's a house down the road that started 320, it's down to 275, you know, three-bedroom, three-bath, basement, two-car garage, nobody wants it. And one of the things that's not helping it sell is a $6,000 property tax bill every year. So if you're telling the, you know, the citizens of Yellow Springs that, hey, yeah, we know your property values are down, we know your property taxes are sky-high, and what we're going to do is give these Windsor, this well-financed, remember, they came in there and said, we're so well-financed, we're so flush with cash, we don't, we can be our own bank, we don't even need to borrow a loan. So why are we giving them $4 million when we're all getting hammered with, you know, property tax, this house I'm talking about, $6,000, it'd be probably $2,000 if it weren't Fairborn or Xenia or Springfield. We all know property taxes are extremely high here, so it's a sensitive subject when you say, yeah, but, you know, these property taxes go to roads, go to schools, we're going to give this Windsor company, who's flush, we're going to give them $4 million tax. That's not the legacy you want, I know that. And I think they're starting, what I don't like is, I'm starting to see a lot of ruffles with Antioch, like a lot of people are starting to talk bad about, you know, it used to be, I support Antioch, I support Antioch, now a lot of people are saying, Antioch's got to go, you know, this is not right, you know, so it just feels like a lot of, just a lot of, a lot of disruption. But anyway, my concern is that it's an emergency, and it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that if it goes through under an emergency, there's no opportunity to do a referendum. Okay, thanks. Amy, if you want to speak to that, I mean, I could make a comment about the, it's more of a timing issue than anything else.
Well, it is a timing issue, but he is correct. Emergency ordinances are not subject to a right of referendum.
Yeah. I mean.
Is there a reason why it has to be an emergency? Can it just be a regular passage of? Unless, unless there's a whole purpose to get around the people, and I don't think that would be it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, it's a reasonable question. I mean, the, the dynamic, as I understood it was, we were trying to figure out how to close out the conversation with this group. That's the short version. We've had an expectation that we were going to try to figure it out with this group, and then if we start over next year, and I don't know, Amy, maybe you could speak to like, what happens next year? Like basically, I think the conversation internally is about, hey, how do we close out with a group that's been doing all the discussions about CRAs, that's been doing discussions about this project? So certainly no, I mean, certainly no desire to, you know, override what people are thinking, and obviously, people haven't voted on this question, so I don't know for sure what they're voting on, but it's just, we would start over, so we just passed the, we're just talking about the CRA, so if we passed it, but we didn't pass the, and with the win, with the Windsor part, if we did it yet this year, would also be an emergency thing?
Well, that would be done by resolution. It wouldn't need to be an ordinance.
Okay, and so then the resolution, is that subject to referendum?
Yes, resolutions would be subject to referendum, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and not passed by, by emergency. But to answer your question, Gavin, about with the coming out of the slate of new council members, or the three new council members, by practice, we don't read ordinances in two different years for that very reason. The new members that are voted on will, of course, have their own opinions and thoughts of all of this. So if you, if we wait until, well, let me think about this, if you do not pass this as an emergency tonight, you would be able to pass it as, still pass it in 2025, because it would come for second reading at the next meeting, and then approval would take effect right around the end of the year. What we would not do with this council is bring the resolution, bring the agreement with Windsor. That would then not happen with this council.
Yep.
And so then it would just kick to the next slate of council members to consider the agreement with Windsor after the new year.
Yeah, so what?
So really quickly, can we get a layperson's explanation about what, you know, it, it sounds as if that the general consensus, at least from some residences, from some residences, that we're just giving, we're, here's $4 million, here you go. We need, we need to, we're not just handing Windsor $4 million. And what, what are the nuances that we could explain better so people can understand exactly what it is?
Well, you know, with any of these developments, when you have a developer requesting, for example, an abatement such as this, there's the question of, they will often tell you, we can't, you know, to make our, our stack work, to build our financial stack, to build the development, this is part of the piece of the puzzle. Whether that's true or not, it's going to depend on every developer, and it's going to depend on every development. So certainly, this is not the village cutting them a $4 million check, or however the numbers shake out in terms of what the tax abatement would be. It is the village foregoing those taxes. The schools will be kept whole, but the village would, in the event of an abatement, such as what, for example, Windsor has requested, it would be the village foregoing those, those tax dollars for
Specific amount of time.
A specific amount of time to give them that piece of the puzzle of their financial stack to make the development work. Tyler, do you have any other thoughts on that, anything else that you would explain differently?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, it's really used as an inducement to try to either move a project forward or also get something in return for the village that the village may not have gotten in the first place. In the first instance, the village could offer an abatement, but know that that's only temporary. When the abatement falls off, the full tax bill will be rendered upon what is now a large amount of value existing in the community. So it's just a temporary item that eventually comes off, and then all of the taxing jurisdictions reap a larger tax take from that asset that is constructed. There are developers who, they will not build. They just, they will not build on the parcel if you don't give them something. I don't know exactly where that line is here with Windsor. We have seen in other cases where they will sit on property, they will not build on it. So if you want your project, sometimes you have to engage in this negotiation. On the other hand, though, the village has been very strategic in trying to say, well, if we are going to offer this to you, it's going to be with guardrails, it's going to be somewhat limited, but also we want something back, which is to reflect our values and our strategic priorities with affordable housing. And we've tried to make that a baseline requirement across all of the multifamily abatements in the legislation, is that you need to have 15% of the units that will qualify under the zoning code as affordable dwelling units. So for those two things, there's those two things that are going on out there as well.
And I will add, in echoing Brian's comment, I mean, that we're not doing an agreement today with Windsor or anyone else, but to be able to do it, we need to have this CRA in effect so that it could be used. In the future, if we didn't do it, we wouldn't be able to do, we'd have to start all over again, I'm sorry, at, at some point. So it's really, and I will say myself, I am at least one person on council who has spoken about the need for economic development, and of course, we've, this council, or I was on council when we established the Yellow Springs Development Corporation to focus on, on economic development, and this is one of the tools that we've chosen to, to implement and put in place so that we could be in a, in a better leverage position when we are talking to developers in the future.
Right. Yeah, I just, you know, to underscore, we are basically passing tonight potentially the tool, and we haven't like decided whether we're going to use it yet or not, so.
So can I just make sure I heard you right? I think what I heard you saying is, is that if we pass this thing, it's an emergency and it cannot be referendummed.
Correct.
If we want, and then if we were to talk about the, a CRA with Windsor with this council, then if there was a resolution to do an abatement, that would be able to be referendummed.
Right.
Okay, I'm not like, obviously, nobody appears like excited about referendums, but the idea of, but I'm just trying to make sure that you're, I understand, it's a reasonable concern, and if I understand correctly, the, you could still do it, essentially. Yeah, there does feel to me like there's a significant advantage of being able to talk with the group that's been talking about it, and that doesn't take away the will of people if they want to push it anyway, push against it anyway. That's how I process it.
Yes.
I'm Jerry Papania, 214 East Whitman Street. I've been a resident of Yellow Springs for 46 years. The citizens of our community approved an increased property taxes and income tax to support our local Yellow Springs schools. The Yellow Springs is only one of eight school districts in Ohio of 611 districts that has a 2% income tax. The tax burden for many property, I'm sorry, the tax burden for many of Yellow Springs residents is a challenge. Over 60% of our property taxes go to the school district. The school district needs to have a seat at the negotiating table when tax abatements are discussed, and this needs, this provision needs to be incorporated into this ordinance. Secondly, a negotiated tax abatement needs to be reviewed by an independent financial analyst to make sure that long-term implications and decisions are being made, that, that the decisions being made are rational. This needs also be included in the ordinance. Again, my concern is that pushing this thing through as an, as an emergency, just because you can talk to Windsor, is bogus. You know, you got a new council coming in, there's no hurry to work on this. Windsor's owned that building for, for two, for a year and a half, and the only thing they've done over there is mow, mow the grass. The building's not secure, it's a public nuisance, it's a safety hazard. And I also wonder why the village hasn't pressured Windsor to take care of that safety hazard. Anybody can walk into that building and cut themselves on glass, be exposed to hazardous materials, and there are people going into that building. Neighbors can, neighbors can attest to that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jerry. Yes.
Hi, my name is Relita Hildebrand, and I've been following this discussion for, I don't know, six months, as council has been discussing the Windsor project and specifically CRA and tip. And so I don't see anything nefarious in this, in this at all. I understand the concerns of some, that there may be different philosophies coming in with the new village council members, but also having been here and listened to the discussion for months and months and months, I understand why we are where we are. I understand that there, the schools are made whole by this, so there is no detriment to taxes that would be normally going to the schools, so this would only be reducing or eliminating for a certain amount of time. or eliminating for a certain amount of time the taxes that would go to the village council. I do think, though, that there's validity in doing a long-term cost analysis, especially with respect to where our village finances are right now. That, that's not to say that I don't support this emergency legislation, because I do, I think it's important. And I think that there was, if not stated in understanding by Windsor, that this council was going to at least have that, you know, that tool in the toolbox, if you will, when it came to negotiating with them in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Relita.
I have a further question.
Come on up.
I'd like to know how the schools are going to be made whole. The state, the state legislation says if there's a tax abatement of 75% or less, the schools have no say in the issue. So I'd like to know how the schools are going to be made whole. By my calculations, just on the Windsor project, and this doesn't include anything down the road, the school is going to be deprived, the school district's going to be deprived of between $4 and $5 million over the course of the 15-year tax, 75% tax abatement that Windsor is requesting. So I'd like to know how the schools are going to be made whole.
Well, I was going to invite Tyler in on that one.
Yeah. And you could just make them whole. We just, we just decide to, right?
Tyler, do you want to speak to that, how the schools are kept whole?
Yeah, so for residential community reinvestment area abatement, so remember, there's two different categories. There's the residential side, and then there's the commercial side. And we already said council has the discretion to classify multifamily as being either residential or commercial. And council is currently under this legislation classifying them as residential. So under the residential program, there's actually no school district requirement for approval for any residential abatement program, and the schools would not be made whole on that amount. Windsor is just coming in and asking for less than 100%. They're not asking for a full abatement. They're just asking for, they're asking for less than that, at 75%. So the schools will be, they will, they will receive all of the funds that they would have received on the 25% that's not abated. So out of 100 million, just simple numbers, seven, or 25 million would not be abated. So the schools would continue to be made whole on that amount. That's just done through the auditor's system. On the 75% abatement for the duration of the exemption, there is no payment to the schools on that amount. Key points to remember is that the schools are not receiving any value on that site. It's not a performing site at this time. So it's not that anyone is losing funds, they are deferring the full collection of that amount until the abatement stops. When the abatement stops, the school will again start to have the full amount go towards their, their real property tax calculations. So it's only deferring that off into the future. The other interesting thing to keep in mind is that when you have an abatement or a TIP, that new value that's created is not considered in the state's funding formula. So when Windsor builds this new apartment complex facility, perhaps there might be, I think, 20 or 20-plus million dollars of new value in the community. With an abatement, it won't be considered for the school funding formula, which can make you look better off in terms of getting more money from the state. So it, there are a lot of different things to, to think about there, but it is a good point. There is no school district make-whole provision under the 75% for the residential payment. That being said, school districts, and, and our citizen was very right, this ordinance doesn't necessarily speak to school district involvement, but that's because it's done by an operation of state law. So for a commercial abatement, that's right, if the village wishes to authorize an abatement in excess of 75% for a commercial facility, for example, then the village would have to get school district approval in order to do that. But all of that is happening by state law and not necessarily in this ordinance. It just depends on which way you want to classify things.
Well, yeah, I'm glad we talked about it, because I think we've been talking about so many different tools that I had in my, I was, I was thinking about the 75 in the context of the TIP, so I'm glad we talked about it again. The, I, I feel like we should just talk about the other components of the project, which is the major question or sort of dynamic here, which is that we haven't seen an apartment building built in Yellow Springs in 30, 40 years. And so the, the balance, the thing we're trying to figure out, maybe, I was trying to be conservative. Just to name, this is the dynamic that we're all trying to figure out how to juggle, is like, we're, we have a really challenging rental market. There's not a lot of new, virtually no new apartments. There's not very many, well, anyway, I, everybody knows the rental market is a problem. And so then you're trying to figure out how, how do you get investment? And on this case, the, the dynamic of there not being dollars for the schools in the shorter term is certainly a concern, and they haven't been getting any dollars from this. So there is a question of like, would you prefer to have something that will certainly generate revenue in 15 years or something that will not generate revenue? I understand that, I would assume that residents would, that would say, hey, well, couldn't we get something different? And that's been the discussion, right, has been, could it be less units, et cetera? And we're in this dynamic where we don't totally get to choose which developer owns the property, which developer is going to do what size project, and so we're trying to navigate those dynamics. So I, just to say, we hadn't talked about all the components, but those are the, those are the things I think we're weighing.
I'm sorry, just quick, is there a maximum? Could it be zero forever? I mean, is 75 for 15 years a max?
For, for the listening public, would you mind coming up and answering, asking a question?
I'll go back for your second question, but I was just wondering, is there a maximum abatement? Like, 75 for 15 years seems like a lot, but could it be 100% for 50 years? I'm just wondering if there's a cap. And should there be a cap, you know, on, on something like this? Sorry.
Yes, state law, state law provides a cap of 15 years for any community reinvestment area abatement under, under these programs.
Thank you.
And just to remind everyone, this is, this tool is not a Windsor tool, it's a village tool. So it's for us to have a, a tool that we can take advantage of when we're negotiating with any developer that would want to come in. It just so happens, you know, we can't pretend that Windsor is not there, you know, but, but we, we, we need this regardless of what, who the developer is or whatever the development project is.
Is there a problem as president, if you give Windsor 15, or, you know, 75% for 15 years, and somebody else comes along and says, hey, I'm going to build a multifamily, are you then tied to have to give them the same thing?
I would submit that-
I don't know, I'm just-
Yeah, I would submit that every development agreement is going to be different and on, written and developed or designed on its own merits. Tyler, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, and that's what I think we're, council has tried to do, is to just put some guardrails in with respect to the program, and that's what we intend under section four, is that we'll need to negotiate, prior to entering any CRA agreement, we need to negotiate with the village on these types of terms, and village council have to approve it.
Okay. We're going to, just we're starting to have repeat, come on up, Jerry, I want you to go ahead, come on up, but we do want you to-
I'd just like to point out that the school district is not being made whole when you defer 75% tax abatement. Yeah, they, they get 25%. They, we had a $55 million bond issue, and the taxes in this community went up considerably. There's a lot of people under strain. And for an organization like Windsor to get a 75% tax break, and I'm not saying that's what it's going to be, because there needs to be some hard negotiations on this. It's not just walk in and here's your 75%, okay? To me, the school district needs a weigh-in on this. We're all paying dearly for operating our, our schools. And I think the general consensus of the public is going to be, we pay, why shouldn't they? You know, essentially, this is going to put $4 to $5 million in the pocket of Windsor Development on that one project. I realize what you're talking about tonight is not just for this one project, but there are ramifications down the road. You know, there, there are going to be other projects, you know? And we talk about not having apartments built in Yellow Springs. The Bowen Housing Study calls for 60 market rate apartments. Between the Windsor project at the Student Union, what they're proposing at the Kettering Building, and what's being talked about out on East Enin Road, we're talking over 200 apartments.
Any additional public comments before we-
Can I make a second comment too?
So again, Relita Hildebrand, I have been following this for a long time. I don't think there's anything nefarious with this decision, as I said before, and I think it's important that we all recognize that this, passing this will not, is not a decision on Windsor. Windsor will have to come separately, and it will be a separate discussion and a separate debate. This provides a framework for village council, and frankly, it's needed. It's been needed for a long time. Can you imagine how much the people who have, and one person in particular who has built, who has bought historic buildings and spent tens of millions of dollars to renovate those buildings for basically nonprofit purposes? I mean, we could do so much with this that is beyond Windsor. So I appreciate you all sticking to the plan that you had been talking about for months. Thank you.
Thank you, Relita.
I think it's worth noting that on the, the plan, at the last planning commission meeting, we talked about the Spring Meadows project, where they're talking about 190 units. It's, tell me if I'm wrong, but it's 90 that are for sale for sure, single family.
70, 70, single family and 120.
Okay, so it's 70, 120. And those are townhomes that we don't yet know-
120 are townhomes.
Whether they'll be for sale or rental, right?
Correct.
So they, they didn't clarify what it'll be. And so the, we are kind of at this point, it started at the planning commission meeting, where the Bowen Housing Study's saying, hey, you need this many units, and we're starting to go notably over the number of units that are needed. Now, this gets into a whole bunch of questions about how you define things. On the market rate side, on the, we've made literally zero headway on the affordable units, and then on the family rental, we've made very minor headway, but still have a long way to go. So it's, it becomes this sort of interesting question of, what do you do when somebody wants to bring you more units than you need of one kind to help you get enough units that you need of another kind? And this is where, we talked about a little bit planning, so I'll just say it here, I think this is where we need to do some more planning and discussion so that we have some more clarity of how these things interplay, because we don't, we haven't, we haven't made that sort of plan as a group.
All right. Anything else from council? Yes, Riley.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Riley. I work for the newspaper. I mean, beyond the multifamily units within the CRA, there are also a bunch of single family units who could potentially benefit from these future abatements. I mean, I understand that it's going to be handled on a case-by-case basis, but I guess I'm just curious to know how that'll be handled. I mean, I've heard so many council members over the past year say that we're not interested in encouraging or incentivizing the creation of more single-family units in Yellow Springs. I also understand that might change when the council makeup is different in a month. But isn't it possible that by incentivizing, by like offering some of the considerations within a CRA to builders of single-family homes within other areas of the village outside of these multi-use areas, that it could potentially work against that supposed priority of council to disincentivize the creation of single-family units?
But there's not any, Amy, there's not, residential's not in here, right? There's no single fam, I think you might be talking about the old version, Riley. We took that's out. This one just is multifamily. Great.
Fantastic. Okay. So I guess that's why it's, these, this is a long ordinance to go through, so I guess that's what I was trying to clarify. So thanks. Single family is out of this entirely then, right?
Yes.
For clarity, okay.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Sorry for muddling the waters.
No, happy to hear from you all, all the time, any time you want to come up. All right. I think we've bounced off council enough. I think we're going to close the public hearing. And if there's nothing else from council, Judy, I may ask you to do the roll call vote, please.
All right. Gustafson.
Yes.
Ousch.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
DeBora Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your participation. And Judy, if you could, read by title only, ordinance 2025-27.
Holy smoke, it's here somewhere down under all this stuff. This is authorizing tax increment financing for the 314 Dayton Street project and declaring an emergency.
Give me the motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'm looking to you again, Amy.
I'm looking right back at you, Kevin.
Amy and Tyler.
All right. This is what we have been referring to as the WISO TIP. It's the building on, on Dayton Street where WISO will be located. This is also being brought as, if I could just take a quick pause to talk a little bit about emergency legislation. Judy, did your memo make it in the packet?
Sure, we did.
Okay. Judy pulled together a memo that's in the packet on this, and I selfishly want to make the point, but we are very judicious here in the village about our use of emergency legislation. We do it very rarely, and it is an unfortunate coincidence that three of them have hit the same agenda at the same time. This one is being listed as an emergency or being presented to you as an emergency because the TIP needs to be in place prior to the end of 2025. So as it will be passed by an ordinance, we have to do it as an emergency, otherwise we'd have the two readings and then the 30-day hold, and it wouldn't take effect in calendar year 2025. So Gavin, you're right, we've thrown around a lot of alphabet soup incentives in the last few months, and so this one that we're talking about now is TIP, Tax Increment Financing, a different tool than the CRA. Under a CRA abatement, a property owner does not pay taxes, they are abated. Under a TIP, the money is still paid, it's just not paid as a tax, it's paid as a payment in lieu of taxes, goes into a special fund, and then can come back to the village to be used for services, infrastructure, et cetera, around the property that has been TIPed. So this one is, I believe, something else we also workshopped and had a chance to discuss here, and Tyler, of course, is here for any questions. I know if you get into the weeds on this, we're going to lean heavily on him, but that is, that is what this, this ordinance is. It's not related at all to Windsor, and it is strictly for that WISO building on Dayton Street.
And you know what? I'm going to apologize greatly because I was still rooting through paperwork, but I would only be truly comfortable if we went back and read this extremely lengthy title handful, and then took another motion in a second, because what I put in the, the agenda is a descriptor, but it is not the official title. Are you talking about on 2025-27? Yeah. Are we good on 2025-26?
Please say yes.
I did not, on the CRA ordinance, the one you just did? Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have the big paragraph long.
You did read the whole, the thing on the CRA? I did. Okay, great.
Okay. So Judy, if you could, please read by the entire title only.
Title only is kind of a misnomer, so.
Right, right.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels associated with a WYSO project in the village to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of real property taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments in lieu of real property taxes, requiring the distribution of a portion of those service payments in lieu of real property taxes to the Yellow Springs Exempt Village School District and the Green County Career Center, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that directly benefit the parcels, and approving related matters, and declaring an emergency.
Now, I will entertain a motion in a second to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
All righty. Amy?
I'll stick to my previous comment.
Okay, only, there we go. All right, council, any questions, commentary, or concerns?
So I'm just going to say what I've said before, this is- This is an indication of, I think, the nuance of this. What I've said before, that I haven't changed my opinion on, but I'm open to hearing if folks have different takes, is that this is one where the, so we are, this one, we're talking about making the schools whole on this one.
Absolutely.
Right? But then there are other taxing entities that are not made whole on this one, and different than the discussion about the TIF in the context of the Windsor Development, where there's significant infrastructure needs directly around the parcel. This one, it doesn't feel like it's the same situation, and it's the slippery slope with our property taxes of where do you give the abatements and how much money? And so, I've made all these points before, but just to say, that's the reason that I would intend to vote no against, on this, unless I would hear otherwise.
Okay. Tyler, do you want to weigh in on some of the high points in terms of, because there's been concern about the schools, and when we say the schools, it is the exempted school village and the Green County Career Center, and what, and where, and when those tax dollars can and should be used?
Yes, so, a little bit similarly, Ohio law prescribes the village's interaction with the Yellow Springs Exempted Village School District and the Green County Career Center with respect to authorization of the TIF. And the law essentially says that for municipalities like the village, so long as the ordinance in question states that the, both of the schools will receive the exact amount of real property taxes that they would have received but for the TIF, that then the Green County Treasurer, with the collection of real property taxes, will collect these service payments in lieu of taxes. It's just the same calculation as normally would be done when this building comes online, and the treasurer of Green County will send the funds calculated to both of the school districts. So, the village doesn't even have to do that. It'll just be done automatically at the county level. Essentially, what would happen here is that building has been constructed for the most part, I believe, but I don't think there's been a CNO issued. The Green County Auditor will pick up improvement value for whatever is there currently, they'll pick it up on January 1 of 2026, and then that will eventually flow through the property tax system for taxes payable in calendar year 2027. So, here we have a triggering with respect to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so the village wouldn't file with the state of Ohio on this TIF until that happens. So, when we file, the TIF would then move for 30 years, and it would exempt 100% of the increase from the value in place here in 2025, and then the difference that the auditor will pick up based on the new construction. That will run for 30 years. For the full 30 years, the schools are made whole. On the other side of that, everything that was in existence prior to the start of the TIF will continue to flow normally to the village, to the schools, to the other taxing jurisdictions like your Adam H. Lettys, your county Lettys, different things like that. That's the long and the short bit. Ohio law says, when you make the schools whole, which we're doing here, you don't have to have any kind of approval from the school district to do that. The village will just send a 14-day courtesy notice to both entities, and I think that's already been done. But that's the long and the short bit.
Okay. Thank you for that, Tyler. And I will make an attempt to do the layman's version. But I will ask the question, in terms of the value of, the current value of the property, when was that done, or when was that established? Was that done earlier this year, or at some point in time?
Yeah, so, if, and that's part of the reason why the village has, if the village wishes to pass the TIF, it must be done in 2025, because we have to lock in base value so as to make that determination of what came before and what comes after. If we waited until 2026, the base value would rise up to the new value, and the TIF would produce nothing, because nothing would be above. If we lock in the base value now, before the construction values picked up, all that upside from the base value in '25 to the new value will be picked up under the TIF. But anything 2025, 2025 and before will continue to flow normally. It's not a lot, it's land value and any pre-existing residual value that was, it's not a lot. But that's why we're, if the village council wants to do it, it'd have to be done this year.
Yep. So.
Can we, Johnny, talk about why we, why this TIF proposal is coming forward?
Sure, Brian. This is another tool that we can use to guarantee that we have funds directly for the infrastructure, not only on the parcel, but around the area for sidewalks, curves, resurfacing, sewer, storm. We can use this, and it's a revenue stream for that particular area. It's not just the 314 Dayton. It can be used on Winter, it can be used on Union, Stafford, Dayton Street. These are funds that we know that we can guarantee, that we're going to be able to have to be able to do projects that we need to do. Yeah, they may look good, Gavin, infrastructure-wise, but if you go behind the building on Union Street, on Winter Street, on Stafford Street, we got some major problems back there. So, again, this is just another, because if not, they're going to come out of the general fund, and so, again, I really deeply ask you guys to think about this. This is a tool that is out there that we can use to be able to pick up some small revenue amounts moving forward.
Just to say, I can completely see why. It's just, it's just sort of like, where do you draw the line, you know? So, I, I'm not, when I say I plan on voting yes, I'm not like, this is a terrible thing, I can't see why anyone would do it. Like, it's just, it's a tricky, it's trying, trying to figure out where you draw the line, it's just, it's hard.
I think the line that we drew was education. To talk to Jerry's, yes, the schools do need money, and we are willing to still make that happen, but other entities outside of our area are not going to feel the burden that our taxpayers and staff is going to feel by the added increase of traffic and foot traffic and snow and salt and all of that in that area. So, we're asking to be able to collect some more of that.
Yeah. No, it's just, you know, people in our community rely on, you know, Department of, you know, developmental disabilities, people in our community rely on the library. So, it's a, yeah, it, the acute need versus the broad need, so, yeah.
And again, I have to say, the library, we do allow them to use the building free of charge. So, it's not that we're taking a major amount of support away from them, but we're just asking for a little bit.
Yeah, and for the, on the infrastructure piece around that, especially Union Street, it would be nice to one day have some sidewalks on Union Street that I can take my client who uses the power chair down. And that's, I mean, I don't want to make it overly personal, but just, if you, you know, you dig two, two feet down, six feet down in this town, you're going to find stuff that you never thought you would find.
Absolutely.
And so, this, so this, the TIF specifically, those funds are for the, for, for infrastructure improvements around the area?
Correct. Yep. And the piece I was going to add is, whatever the current, and that's what I wanted to get the clarification on, whatever the current value of the land is, and whatever taxes are being received, all of that will continue for everyone. What'll happen differently is, from whatever that value is, as that value increases, once the certificate of occupancy is, is applied, that increased value is what schools will still get and the village will have access to. And, and I guess, the question I had was, you know, we do have it to be used for infrastructure, and that can be used during the 30 years, we don't have to wait till.
No, you can use it immediately.
Yes.
Yep. And then if it runs out, if there's money in at the end, it goes in the general fund.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guarantee it ain't going to run out though.
It ain't going to run out though.
All right. Anything else from council before we open the public hearing? All right. The public hearing is now open. Are there members of the public who'd like to discuss the TIF, which I understand now is a verb? The property has been TIFed. Yes.
Relita Hildebrand, I just want to say how happy this makes me. I think this is such a great option for Yellow Springs, and I'm going to be selfish, Gavin, and say that, you know, we do have a huge burden on a few residents here, and this is a way that I really think we can mitigate the costs of having an aging infrastructure system, and at the same time, do massive renovations for older buildings, like what's been done for the WYSO building. I have to tell you, there's, there's one thing that stuck with me from a village council meeting several months ago about a resident who has a sewage problem, or like a water problem in his basement as a result of that. And I mean, I still think about it today. I think it's an amazing project, but like, I think that we need the TIF to be able to help anybody downstream of this project, no pun intended, who is impacted by the, you know, the infrastructure that went into it. And so, if it's like expanding the sewer and water systems all the way around, sidewalks, everything, and to be able to do that without a cost to us, I think is just a phenomenal opportunity, and I think it would be phenomenal in the future if we allowed, if we, we encouraged this to be a part of future buildings and renovations in the downtown and other parts of this, the village. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public commentary?
Jerry Papeney again. I'd like to request that when these, a TIF or CRA agreement has worked out, that the public have access to the numbers. We're talking in generalities here, we haven't talked any numbers. I think a financial analyst needs to put something together on what revenue the schools or the village is losing and what they are gaining by these things, and there needs to be numbers attached.
It was, it actually wasn't in this packet, but the last time that we talked about this TIF, all those numbers are there. So, it's, I think it's 900,000 is the total, is the total loss for, well, I'll let somebody who's looking at the chart say it, because as I'm saying it, I want to make sure that I don't get it wrong. But there, all of the numbers, the full analysis was in, not this packet, but the packet.
Before.
It wasn't.
Two packets ago.
Two packets ago, I think. Yeah.
So, let me see if I understand this. The village is going, going to pay $900,000 in improvements. Is that correct?
No.
No. Do, do one of you have the chart up that you can just read the numbers from? Tyler, do you have it there?
But we don't have anything. I don't think they ran anything on TIF, because we don't know what the value is, or the.
No, they, they're, they're modeling on the TIF. It was in, in the packet.
It wasn't in this packet, but it was in, I think, two pa, I looked it up when I was looking at the packet. It's, so it's essentially the, it's the total tax amount, the, above the current value, the thing that Kevin's talked about multiple times.
That's the undeveloped value?
The whole, yeah, the undeveloped value to the developed value, that difference. The schools are going to get everything they would get in a normal setup. They're going to, they're not going to lose a penny.
They're going to get the taxes of the undeveloped property.
No, no, they're going to get the taxes of the developed property. They're going to get everything. Not, this is why it's, it's different than the one we just did on the CRA.
The schools win for sure on this one.
But then the other taxing entities will not get that. So, that the libraries, the.
Green County.
All the, anything else, basically, except for the schools. And that, the schools includes both the ESC and the.
Green County Career Center.
Career Center and the, and the actual Yellow Springs School District.
Exempted School District.
Right? Did you find it, Tyler? Did I kill enough time?
Where, where.
Okay.
Where are the funds for the, for the improvements coming from?
We're not giving anybody any money. This would be money that would be given to us by the TIF.
It's their tax dollars.
It's their tax dollars that they would be paying.
Yeah.
And we're just going to TIF it to where then it would be a special account to be able to come to us for the above.
So, am I correct in understanding that the owner of the property will be paying the full tax amount?
Correct.
Absolutely.
However, that tax amount is being earmarked for physical improvements.
Around the.
Around the building.
Absolutely. Around the area, not the building.
Understand that. But in the case of the CRA, there's no.
That's an abatement. That's actually, you.
Okay.
The request from Windsor at least is not paying as many taxes. This is the exact same amount of taxes.
On a TIF, full taxes.
Correct.
Are paid.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the money is applied to the project.
Correct. To the area.
Yeah. Okay.
All righty. Any, okay, Riley. All right, you got the right document now? You got?
Just me. All right. Happy to be a part of the rotating cast of people standing at the podium. My name's Riley, once again. I guess we've heard the, I mean, I've heard the phrase, we can't do a park on the other side of town. So, now that we have like a very specific tip, I guess I'm interested in the radius of like, how far can these improvements go? And I guess, I don't know, maybe now I can say, like, I'm speaking as a private resident. I live on Union Street, so I too would like some sidewalks over there, and I know that property may change in the coming years, I'd be surprised if it didn't. So, and yeah, I guess I'm interested in knowing the radius of how far these public improvements can go from the epicenter of the TIF, and what is at the top of the municipal priority list in terms of those improvements, if it's site-specific plans, or if it's the neighbor with sewage problems, you know, half a block away. So, I, I know I'm not guaranteed an answer, but I'm interested in hearing what the priorities are with the tip. Thanks.
Tyler, do you know the area, the distance?
Yeah, so, so the, again, this is kind of regulated by state law, and the state law for this type of tip is, is that the, the funds must be used for the direct benefit of the parcels for which the revenue was derived. And so, really, that's a reasonableness test. Sidewalks right around the block, that absolutely works. It's reasonable to conclude that, you know, people who would visit WYSO would use those sidewalks. So, that's ineligible spend. Sewage around or in the vicinity, probably, absolutely. The village just needs to show that there's a reasonable connection to the WYSO building. It's probably all integrated into the same system that the WYSO building utilizes as well. So, you're just making that reasonableness requirement. So, where does that line stop? I think as you get further and further away, you have to perform a different analysis. If you're 10 blocks away, you're going to have to show, well, maybe it's not 100% one-to-one match, maybe we're going to save 40%. If you want to go all the way across town, we're starting to stretch that. But it's really a reasonableness test. You can't use these funds for a park all the way on the other side of the village, for example. That probably wouldn't work. But you're just constantly making that, that reasonable, reasonableness nexus.
Ah, so.
It's not a right-line test.
So, we'll, we'll call it a reasonableness nexus.
No exact radius. And then on, on the budget side, it's, there's, we don't have, you know, anything more than what we have on the budget. So, it's, that's going to be, we'll have to talk about it and figure out what we do, yeah.
So, do we still want to show the numbers, Tyler, that you were briefly?
Riley, Exhibit B.
It is a lot, I guess I'm just looking for privacy. Yeah, thank you.
I mean, it at least gives you the.
Yeah. Thank you. God, thank you so much.
If everybody's happy, any other additional public comments?
Okay. I'll be left.
Yeah. So, the public hearing is now closed. Anything else from council before we vote?
Well, that was actually my question. So, just the thing you're looking at, Tyler, so is, what is the total amount that we would, you see where I got the. So is, what is the total amount that we would, you see where I got the 894, right? It's the bottom of the green one, but that, is that the number?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, there's 900, roughly $900,000 that we would get.
Over a period.
Over the period of 30 years.
Correct.
Would have gone to the other taxing entities. That's, that's the answer, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. No, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Now, for sure, the public hearing is closed. And Judy, if you could call the roll, I'll do a roll call vote, please.
All right. House.
Yes.
Gustafson.
Yes.
Devois Leonard.
No.
Brown.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone, for your participation and your indulgence. Okay. We're out of ordinances, and now we're to a resolution. Judy, if you could read.
Oh, we're not, though.
Yeah, oh, no, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. I, I won't even blame it on my age. If you could read by Todd Lonely, ordinance 2025-28.
This is a 2025 fourth quarter supplemental appropriation and declaring an emergency village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Tiffany, is this you?
It is. It is. You have in front of you, I believe, the supplemental appropriation for the quarter there. It totals 5,4500 to the general fund, 8,000 to the street maintenance and repair fund, 20,250 to Parks and Recs fund, and then 782.85 to the American Rescue Plan Act. That last one is just an accounting piece. And so these are to clean up and prepare us for the final quarter of the fiscal year to set us up. And so you have, I believe, the comments in front of you with the amounts for each specific supplemental. Are there any questions about any of these?
That is the question. Are there questions? Of coun, from council. Okay. Hearing none, since this is.
Actually, I do. So professional services for the water leak that was in the Bryant Center, that was the carpet and all the, everything in the youth center.
That is the backflow preventer that failed due to the water main break.
Okay.
We have submitted to the insurance, but we still got to pay the contractors.
Sure.
So if the insurance grants the claim.
Is that the youth center?
It is. Youth center, the hallway, the mechanical rooms and all that. So, yes.
All right.
And we're still waiting the quotes from the contractors and the final result with the insurance company.
Okay.
Any additional comments or questions from council? Hearing none. Again, with this being an emergency reading of an ordinance, we are going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Does the public have any comments regarding emergency reading of ordinance 2025-28? Okay. Seeing no activity, public hearing is now closed. And once again, one more opportunity for council staff to weigh in. Okay, Sina, Judy, if you could do a voice vote, please.
A roll call, yes.
Roll call.
Gustafson.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Devois Leonard.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for all of your participation. Now I am sure we are done with the ordinances. And we have, regarding our public hearings and legislation, the reading of resolution 2025-57, if you do that, Judy, by Todd Lonely.
This is directing the village manager in conjunction with the village's IT service provider to establish a program safeguarding against cybersecurity threats and ransomware attacks.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
And Johnny?
This is me, and if Amy's got a, we can ask Amy as well. This is House Bill 96 at its finest. We have to have a council resolution to get a policy together to bring a little ring back to tell you that we can't tell you what our policy was. So we have to have this passed by the end of '25. We have to have our policy in place by June 1. So we are currently working, we actually, at the mayor's and managers, I had, it's in the report. We had University of Dayton is part of this as well, and then we have already got it set up to where they can come in and help us with our IT. So this is the standard that a lot of communities are passing, and Amy Blankenship is the one that gave it to us.
Yeah.
Now that your name has been invoked.
Right, yeah. This is, like Johnny said, the general assembly's enacted it. The most significant detail of this resolution for council, I think, is the idea that if, everybody knock on wood, in the event of a ransomware attack, the village cannot pay, thank you, cannot pay until it has council approval. So.
Let's roll.
Yeah. I would imagine that that would, that would result in an emergency meeting should that ever happen, and let's hope it doesn't. You're right, we should find some real.
Yeah, okay, everybody knock.
But, yeah, and then, so you will see another, the, the village is putting together their program, the cybersecurity program, that will not be, that document is not a public record, as Johnny said, but you will still approve the program that it exists prior to, I think it's July 1 of 2026. It's June or July, I don't know. You'll have it long before then.
Yeah. All right. Good, good, good. Any other questions of council? From council, I should say. All right. Alrighty. So nothing big to do here. All the heavy work will be done down the road. We appreciate all of that. All right, all in favor of passing this resolution, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, hearing none, that motion has passed. Thank you very much. Now, we are to citizen concerns, and this is the opportunity where the public can weigh in on practically anything that you want to talk about. There will be, as always, a three-minute timer on the wall to help you with your, your comments. Ask you to be respectful of other comments that have been made, and there's no, there should be no expectation of a response to questions from council or staff. Do we have any citizen concerns?
So I have one comment and one concern. My first comment is that I just wanted to say, as far as our schools are concerned, we are so lucky as a community to have the schools that we do. And if you weren't able to go to the school board meeting this past week, it was something to behold to see the fourth graders, all of the kids that got up and read their poetry, they all volunteered to be there, and it was basically almost the entire class. So if you have a chance, I know you're busy, but if you have a chance to see that, it just encapsulates so much of the creativity and wonder that is being developed in our schools. And also, at the same meeting, our superintendent got recognized by a body of her peers. And I think that, you know, Dr. Holden's been a huge asset to our community. I really appreciate her. I'm just sorry that not all of our school board members stood and applauded for her when she got her award. And, you know, I hope that as we have new people come in, that the appreciation for the schools and their leadership will be more even-handed, I guess is the best way I can put it. But the, the fourth graders were just insanely profound and just guileless, and it was beautiful to watch. Okay, my concern is actually having to do with your cybersecurity policy. And I brought it up maybe even a year ago about the idea that you have a set of standards for the staff that you yourself as a council don't, don't follow when it comes to cybersecurity. And so, you know, cybersecurity is only as strong as the weak at Slink. So if you all have laptops that are issued by the village for your, for your public use, you should also be using your public email address for all of your business. And you should all be willing to sign the same cybersecurity agreements that all of your staff members sign. You guys are the only ones in the village right now, much like the board of, the school board is the only, they're the only people in the entire school system who don't sign their cybersecurity awareness protocols. So I only say that I completely agree that it's necessary for you to, for us to do this as a community and for you to do this as a village. I just ask that you take on board what Johnny's putting together for the entire organization, and then you do it yourselves. You sign the same commitment, and you don't use your personal emails for public business for a number of different reasons, cybersecurity probably being the paramount reason. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralita. Yeah, I, I agree. Any other citizen concerns? Going once? Going twice? All right, we have moved on from citizen concerns. Thank you for your participation. Now we're, special reports? Wow, let me finish.
I'm just so eager to do quarterly.
That's the right, she's on the runway.
Yeah, I see.
Bring her up.
Quarterly finances.
Hi. Okay, good evening. Elise Stradilo, Assistant Village Manager. I'm presenting tonight on behalf of our Finance Director, Michelle Robinson, who cannot be here. So I'm going to walk us through the village's third quarter financials and give you a quick overview of where we stand heading into the final stretch of the year. So revenues, our revenues are running ahead of the budget forecast by about 1.8 million for the third quarter. We've collected about 86% of our projected 2025 revenues so far, which keeps us comfortably on track for year end. Switching to the next slide, thank you, Ben. As of September 30th, total revenues across all funds are at 14.5 million, or about 86% of our $16.9 million annual budget. Overall, we're trending just a bit ahead of where we expected to be as we enter the fourth quarter. Switching to expenditures, so on the spending side, actual expenses for the third quarter came in about 2.17 million under budget. Just a quick note that these figures reflect only payments made to date, so they do not include any outstanding encumbrances, which will show up in the coming quarters. Perfect, and then one more for me, Ben. Perfect, okay. Appropriations. So total appropriations across all funds are just over 19.5 million. So far this year, we've spent about 12.5 million, which is roughly 64% of the total budget. We also have about 2.8 million encumbered for planned future expenses, so that leaves approximately 4.2 million, or about 22% of total appropriations available for the rest of the year. And then taking a look at our cash position, so we started 2025 with a cash balance of $14.1 million, and by the end of September, that had increased to 16.2 million. If you can do one more for me, Ben. Yep, perfect. After setting aside the 2.8 million in encumbrances, our available cash balance is roughly 13.4 million, and that's an overall increase of about 2 million through the third quarter. We also earned about 167,000 in interest income this quarter, which helped boost that balance. So just to summarize, in short, revenues are strong and ahead of forecast while expenditures remain below budget. Our cash position is healthy and continuing to improve, and we'll keep a close eye on both revenues and expenses as we move into the final quarter of the fiscal year. Any questions from council?
That is, again, good question. That's their questions. Or comments?
I think it might just be worth noting that it was in the memo for the budget, but we've, we've got really healthy cash reserves. It's why the deficit doesn't have to be sort of, you know, it's a thing to work on. We've got stuff to figure out, but we have really healthy cash. And I know I anxiously await where we end the year, because it's interesting, you know, last year we had a pretty big gap, and I think we were expecting to close it. Looks like it's going to be closer, but how, how far we, how far off we end up will be interesting. And also, give us an indication of how conservative our budgeting has been this year.
Yeah. Yeah, and I will say, Michelle and Tiffany have done a really excellent job at sharpening the pencils and getting those numbers closer to what we've seen before. So, yep, great work to the team on that.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from the remote folks?
Okay, thank you.
Elise, thank you, did a great job. All right, our second special report is our treasurer's report. And that would be Judy.
All right, let's dive right in, remembering that this is as of September 30th. Some things have changed, but as of September 30th, 2025, the village had under active investment 16,165,966. This is an increase of 1,011,370 since your last report given in July, and that those numbers are combined Star Ohio, Raymond James, and West Banko accounts. Interest on all events, investments for the third quarter of 2025 was 167,393. Short-term interest rates have been dropping with the Fed lowering rates in September, then again in October, and potentially again in December. Your cash balances for each account are listed for September 30th. You can see them there. Then you have an annual comparison by month comparing 2024 with 2025. So it's amount over and under the current balance is what's listed. Interest income for third quarter 2025 by account, and then it compares the cash balance from June 30th, just so you can get a sense of that. I put Brad Drager's par value information on our bonds are dropped in. We got those just in time to, to drop them in here. Star Ohio rates remained relatively high through the reporting period, which ended September 30th. They were hovering in the 4.4 range at the end of October, with the annualized yield rate on Wednesday, October 29th, was at 4.39%. That same yield on Wednesday, November 12th was 4.2. In this reporting period, treasury rates showed a decrease in the one-month rate, a marked decrease in the one- and two-year rates, and a decrease in the five-year rate. And you can, those comparisons are in red to your right in the report. West Bankos continuing to match our, match interest rates, which means that the village's sweep account earns about the same rate as the Star Ohio rate. The rate on that account as of September 30th was 4.44%, which is a drop from the 4.55 rate, which we held March through August. This will definitely change for your next report, since the Fed dropped interest rates another quarter point on October 29th, and are likely to do so again in December. There you have it.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Any questions of our treasurer regarding the treasurer's report? All right.
Well, not a question, but just, not that we need any reason to, but something about seeing the treasurer's report was a good reminder that figuring out the budget sooner rather than later will have benefit on interest income, so that it's, it's good for us to get to work at the Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee early in the year. The sooner we can figure it out, the more interest income we'll have coming in.
Well, and there's an opportunity to stash some money in bonds, which we can lock in at a 4% rate with the expectation that we're going to go below that, but we have to know that that cash is not going to be necessary. So there is some, yes, information is a useful thing.
So Judy, I should maybe ask, after the quarterly financials, do we need to approve anything?
By gum, thank you. You do need to move to approve the quarterly financials. Thank you.
Alrighty. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the quarterly financial report.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, hearing none, the quarterly financials have been approved.
Thank you.
And now Elise can press them. Oh, is asleep. Well, tonight.
Oh, yes. Watch your language there.
Wow.
Woo.
That was a close one.
That was a close one. Oh, my gosh. Well, I'm glad we got it done.
Good said.
Okay.
He's so invested in the numbers, she didn't even hear you.
Well, that's good. We like that. We like that kind of commitment.
Side answer.
Yeah. Hey, Elise, way to go. Alrighty. All right, now we're to the manager's report.
All right. I believe Ben took this amazing photo on the front. Did you take that?
Wow.
That is the rare occasion that I'm like, oh, look at that snow. I'm glad it's gone. But it was a welcome sight for some and not so much for the others. The street guys was able to, street staff was able to get out there and get some salt down. It turned very fast, because we had plans, but then it never happened, and then about 4:30 in the morning, it just froze.
Okay.
So.
Weren't you just about to practice too? Didn't it work out pretty well with practicing?
Yeah, it did, yes.
Are we still doing the Brian?
We are, but we did not have a chance because it rained.
Yeah.
So. The quarterly finance, or the quarterly goals will be coming back for an update on December 1. I just want to make sure that you guys seen that last time we did the update on the goals was in August. Again, this is a last council meeting that we're going to be saying Meg Leatherman, I didn't want to make her come tonight. So if you guys do want to say goodbye, next Monday at 3 o'clock, we're having a small thing in the A and B. Villagers are welcome, council's welcome to come back because then on Wednesday before Thanksgiving is her last day in Yellow Springs employment. She's still saying that she's probably going to move back here, so. She has done a fantastic job. She's going to be missed. We had the kickoff meeting today. She was able to give the contractor some great advice and stuff that she's already been working on, and she also said, hey, I'm not going anywhere. If you need help or need answers, questions, just give me a call. So we wish her the best.
That's going to be?
It's going to be on the 24th at 3 o'clock.
That is Monday.
Is it, Elise, is it Monday or Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday.
Thank you.
So. In rooms A and B.
Yep.
The grapevine, the grapevine letter come out. We featured the CBE. There is a couple of things that Allison's been working on, but we have not heard anything final to bring back to council yet. Packed the cruiser happened. I will say that I was not able to give a page today. She was sitting on dispatch and I did not ask her, but I can only imagine the first time it happened, there wasn't even a spot left in the cruiser. I'm only going to say it's probably the same way with the community that we have that is willing to just help out whenever we ask or whenever the need is. Mayor Pam and I went to the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers Meeting. That is where Dr. Grant Nilly from University of Dayton spoke about the cyber. And Monday morning, I had Cameron reach out to him to get in line to be able to have him come out and give us what we need to know. And again, this is a completely free thing. I was sitting with Tip City's manager and they're in the process, they're through the Q1 area of it, and he said, this is a lengthy process, a lot of training, a lot of hours in training. That is where we got to get to. So he goes, it's, it's a lengthy process, but he feels a lot better after going through the first process. And there is two, and there is a three, and they are still developing both of those. So a lot of people have reached out to them. Gun safety video, Ben did a fantastic job, had some all-stars in the videos. If you have not seen that, I recommend you watch it. It was great. My wife actually seen it and she goes, have you seen this? And I was like, I have not seen the finished product, so I immediately watched it. And it was a great, we are very, we have very talented staff on many, the actors, the interviews, the filming of it, and Dr. Holden was in it with Meg, with Megan Wilson. It was great. And we actually had some Yellow Springs students in it as well, so.
What, are there action scenes?
Well, there is action scenes of how to unload and store the guns safely and not to put the key in the box when you go to lock it. So, you know, yeah, you don't want to put the key in the box.
Because then you can't get it back open.
So 313 total served for the two CLS positions, and 284 of them was for either the township or Yellow Springs. So we are, that's, I think it's double from the last meeting. I think the last one was 154 or 164, if I'm not mistaken. Planning Commission did hear the right-of-way vacation for a alley that literally had a house built in the middle of it, so we needed to do the final paperwork. They got that done.
A small shed, as it turns out.
A small shed, yes. It is not. It is a nice-sized house.
They told us it was a small shed.
We'll go for a drive.
Okay.
YSDC is hosting a town hall tomorrow in the A and B from 6 to 7 to talk about the hardware stores. So everyone's, was mailed a postcard, and if you want to attend and see the good things going on, you're welcome to attend.
Can I just jump in real quick on that? I was going to ask, so remind me, can multiple council members go and just not talk to each other?
It's open to the public. It's an open meeting, so.
We can go, we just can't, just don't.
You can't discuss business.
We can't pollute while we're there.
Four people in four corners.
You can come get desserts.
One in the middle. Can't holler out suggestions randomly and have more than three of you hollering out suggestions?
Okay, no, I just, I didn't know if we had to like decide who was going to go.
And Gavin can.
Go for the snacks.
Doesn't say all in favor.
Yeah, right.
So Elise put in a utility roundup is a great, when you're talking about the November giving, if you want to help utilities for people that need help, utility roundup is a good reminder if you want to add in some extra help for the communities that, or for the villagers that need help during the crazier months of the year and not only just through the rest of the year. Let's see here, I wanted to draw the attention. We've been watching this, and I think I better make it note now. We started off the year at about 40 to 30, 39 to 40% of water loss, and we are down into the 20. We're almost into the teens. We have found some problems. We have found some meters that was not being read. It was, it's our own water meters that's already figured in, so we needed to be able to put that in another line. But we are contributing a lot of it to water meter replacements. And so we are catching a lot of small leaks, we're catching a lot of big leaks. And the other thing is, is we have the correlators on the hydrants, and so every week they're getting a ping on hydrants and they correlate it and they're finding leaks. So tremendous amount of work has went into this and the Public Works Crew, in the Water Department, the meter readers, the Utility Department, they have busted their butts to get this down, and Brad and his crew as well. So I want to give a big shout out to them. It has been a focus of theirs for the last four or five years. We was finally able to get the grant thanks to OPWC. So everybody that has worked on the grant all the way down to putting in the water meters, to going back and double checking, a big thank you from the village, and we appreciate all their hard work.
So the, the little monitors that are on the hydrants.
The little black ones.
Yeah, you know what I thought they were?
Yes.
Even though I'm on council, I knew that this was happening.
There's.
Go pros. I was like, when could we start to surveil to this degree? And I was like, oh, wait a minute. I'm surprised you're the only person that thought that. I'm surprised we didn't get letters, actually.
Yeah, well, maybe we will now. They're not go bros.
Yeah, they're not.
Their only listening device is for water. Just so you, for water.
Yeah, 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 right. So do I, what I took away from the presentation about water was that it was, I think it was essentially $40,000 a year of water that was, we couldn't find. And so when I hear you say 40% to 20%, does that mean that we're cutting in half roughly the amount of expense on an annual basis?
Correct. So we was over 40 million gallons of water.
Yeah.
A year, so we're down to 20 million gallons.
And the, was it, am I in roughly the math?
It's about $15,000 a thousand gallons. So mathematicians, yeah, you're probably about right. You're probably about right.
Groaning.
More, but not much more. Okay. So it's a.
It's a big jump.
And the assumption is, is that we're finding things and then therefore you'd have year-over-year savings.
Correct.
In perpetuity.
Absolutely. And not only are we having savings, but homeowners are having savings because that's the first thing Rose does in the morning. Shout out to Rose Bellzelle, that, hey, you've got a leak and it happened at like 2 o'clock in the morning. She can literally tell you, and you'll be like, oh, yeah, that's right, I went to the bathroom at 2 o'clock and the toilet must be leaking. So shout out to Rose and Travis, Ben Sparks, they are doing tremendous, and Rose and Travis is going above and beyond looking, I mean, they are essential meter readers, but they are actually now in the communication stages to make sure that the villagers are knowing that there's a water leak. Some didn't know that they left their hose on outside because they forgot about it. So I actually did it a year ago and I, I had to pay that water bill too. So, so I also want to make note, during the month of August and September, we flushed hydrants, and we still dropped from 40,000, 40 million gallons or 40% to 27%, and we flushed hydrants. So again, I know I said it, but thank you guys for the tremendous work that the team puts in.
Efficient flushing.
Yes. And then if you want to turn the page, you can see the bright red hydrant that Adam and Wesley is knocking out of the ballpark. They're making them things look brand new. So we appreciate the hard effort that they went into making sure that the paint and all that is being put on properly. And we was doing it out in the, just put the tent over, and Adam's like, wait a minute, we can better this process. So they're actually in a controlled environment. They go take one off and they work on it in their time. So you can see a lot of things have been happening. Tree trimming is almost done, should be done probably this week, so we'll be going on to the next one in the new year, 2026. We've had some work at the center circuit being done, had a large tree fall down that the guys took care of. And if you see at the nighttime picture, they come in at 3 a.m. and did a transformer replacement that was leaking at Speedway. So they planned it, we got the transformer in here, so we got that taken care of, and they come in at 3 o'clock in the morning and had it up and running before Speedway needed to be open, so. We have some meters that Rose is still trying to get changed out, so if you have not heard from our team or if you're just ignoring our team, it is a benefit to you because you could get that call from Rose that says, hey, you've got a high water bill, you know, and you may want to check your water softener. Halloween went off, Tanner got all the wood split and sent out. We also was able to get the 365 project pieces put in place that are by the railroad street or by the train station there, if you want to go take a look at it and see what businesses were owned by the African-American community that started the Yellow Springs. It's a great history piece. I want to give a shout out as well to the Community Foundation. That building looks fantastic. They did a great job on that. Megan was out there painting the side of the Penguin John Bryan Pottery Center, so she did a fantastic job. And let's see, Ben, how many did we pick up? We picked up another 30 for YSK Connect, so moving in the right direction.
Good.
So that is what we have.
All righty. Someone's going to do this, YPC?
I talked about that during the managers. That is the town hall.
Yep.
Tomorrow.
Yep. All right, great. Thank you, thank you. Any questions for the manager regarding his report? Okay, hearing none, we are moving on. This being our second meeting of the month, we're going to take the opportunity to highlight any board and commission reports. Is anything critical that we need to discuss?
Well, I kind of brought it up when we were talking about the CRA stuff. This is mostly for Carmen and then I guess for Angie, who's here for next year. But this, this dynamic around the, excuse me, around the, the sort of intersection of the Bowen Study and the comp plan and how many housing units we need and of what kinds, it's, it's definitely a thing that we're going to need to talk about. So just foreshadowing that it's, we're not going to solve it without a planning director in this next couple of months, but it's something that'll come back up for sure.
Is there still some energy regarding an update?
It is already taking place and me and Gavin's getting ready to meet on it.
Okay.
And we'll begin with Carmen as well.
Okay. Cool beans.
Kevin, did you have a nomination?
Oh, yes. Judy has, honestly Judy, I didn't even know this was a thing. If it's happened in my time, I don't remember.
It hasn't.
So, no, it's, and I don't remember what it's called even at this point.
Utility dispute resolution board.
I want to make a nomination for the utility dispute resolution board, or board?
Yeah.
Okay, and nominate Dino Palata, who is a willing volunteer, which is extremely important for this body.
Yes, it is.
Very rarely to help dispute, or to help.
Resolve.
Resolve disputes between residents and the village.
Yes.
So, yeah, thanks for your willingness to serve, and, and he's done it before and done a good job.
Yep.
So.
I will second, I will second that nomination.
Hi.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. All those in favor of approving Dino Palata as a member of the utility dispute resolution board, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign.
It did make me wonder how many other things that we have that I don't know of. I wonder if that's.
Just stay on council.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, it all comes around eventually. It's all cyclical. All righty, we are now looking at future agenda items.
So I, do you have a version that doesn't have the second reading for the annual appropriation on it for some odd reason? That obviously is coming back. Everything else there is correct. You'll notice that right-of-way vacation does come to you as an ordinance that Johnny mentioned.
Okay, I forgot about that.
Oh, yeah.
I had to back up. I was at the managers. I was supposed to do this during managers. Right before I come into the council, we received a note from our Mayors and Managers Association asking us to ask council to sign a letter for Senate, State Senate Representatives about the, for a while, they've been trying to take control for a collection of utility funds away from the local communities.
Stop for a second.
Yes.
Do the remote folks have this?
They do not have this copy.
So Brian and Trish, what we're talking about is, well.
I'll let you finish, Johnny, but just mention.
Yeah, it is OML, it is House Bill 92. If, it's been on there before, it's come back as a, they've changed it, they're trying to soften it, but it still does not work. It's kind of taken the control from the villages and the cities on how to collect or how to shut off people for their utilities that are not paid. And we're asking council to sign a letter and be able to send it out to the state representatives, urging them not to pass this House Bill 92.
And I, it's really late, but I just sent it to Brian and Trish if you want to look at it. And so is your notion that it is signed only by council president or is this?
If council president could sign it with the permission from the other four, that would be great. And then we can get it sent out. Judy can help us send it out to all the representatives that we need to.
So we've got the hard copies here at the dais. Brian and Trish, if you all need to take a moment to look over that. In general, I think we all would typically be in support of, supporting this effort. And I've okayed, Judy and I've had a conversation and certainly she could draft a letter. We have a sample letter that we can't, we could just.
Put it on our letterhead.
Yeah, put it on the letterhead, plug it in, and go with it. And so if there are no concerns about doing so, we, we do intend, and I'd support particularly if I'm the signatory, of sending this letter to our representatives. if I'm the signatory, of sending this letter to our representatives. Any concerns?
Yeah. Sounds good to me. Just, Judy, if you could, like, send it out by email, I'd like to look at it, but, yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, I sent it to you about two minutes ago, so it takes a minute to get down to where you are, but you'll get it.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, I'm in support. Brian seems generally in support. Anyone not in support of sending this letter to our reps? Okay, all right, we seem to be in favor. Trish, I just want to give you the opportunity. You have any concern? I didn't see your...
No, I just finished it. I'm fine with it.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so Judy, go forth, let me know what you need from me.
All right.
All righty. So, Elise has something to say.
I was just going to say, I'd for December first, we'd be Go Bus.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go Bus.
Go Bus. There'll be more to come.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Not Go Bucks, Go Buck.
Yeah, I was like, yeah. Yeah, indeed, but I think that's one way of saying it.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah. Just, on future agenda, so we have, this says, second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-two. That's the one we just did by emergency, right? Is there a second one for that?
We do read the annual budget twice as an emergency.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about the establishing a CRA for the Village of...
That should not be there, I'm sorry.
Okay, but we do need one at some point here to talk about the Windsor project, right?
Correct. Probably December fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the go-ahead from the solicitor, that that's even...
So, next up is negotiation, right? I mean, that's the next step? Okay.
Waiting, waiting for, I mean, anything else? Okay, chair will entertain a motion in a second to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned by, I'm going to say, is it acclamation?
Acclamation.
All righty, we are done. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.